The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
We're meeting to order, and first we'll do roll call.
Becker?
Here.
Maloney?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Sitnikow?
Not here.
Shelton?
Here.
Vandenhevel?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
And then I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Prin 1, Prin C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Prin 1, Prin F, constraining financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against the specific persons except where Par, Prin B applies, which, if discussed in public, would likely be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. In pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Prin 1, Prin G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is our is or is likely to become involved, to wit, report of a policy violation investigation regarding a board member. The board will convene in open session at six p.m., reconvene in open session at 6:00 p.m. pursuant to Section 19.85, Prin 2, Wisconsin Statute to consider the balance of the agenda, which will include an open forum, system and monitoring reports, and the superintendent's update. The board may reconvene in closed session after the conclusion of the regular board meeting for such reasons noted in this posting in pursuant to a proper motion. The board may return to open session to vote on items discussed in closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vandenhevel?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Carried 6-0, we will convene across the hall. entertain a motion to reconvene in open session?
I move that the board I move that the board reconvene in open session pursuant to Section 19.85, Prin 2, Wisconsin Statutes to consider the balance of the agenda.
Second.
Sandy?
McCoy?
She's not here.
She's excused. McCoy's been excused for how long? Oh, McCoy, sorry.
Shelton?
She's now excused, yes. Back to the roll call we did previously.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vandenhevel?
Aye.
All right, carried 5-0, we're now back in open session. We took roll call before we went into closed session, but I'd like to make notice of Rhonda Sitnikow is now here. Also joined at the ta- joining us at the table is our superintendent, Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, to my left, and our two InterCity Student Council members, Luke Pazani, who's our president from Southwest High School, and Owen Brennan from Preble High School. And then to my far left is Sandy Heller, our board secretary. All right, at this point, I'll rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then I've asked Laura to read the mission statement.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you, Laura. And then also, next is our collaborative commitments. And these are commitments that we agreed on back in September, and we are reading them at each of our board meetings. So today we'll start with Katie, and come this way. You want to take two, Katie, because Christina's not here?
We will strive to review board materials and seek clarifying information before board meetings. We will embrace diverse views and perspectives as a path to effective solutions.
We will show consideration to everyone, fellow board, school board members, staff, students, families, and community members in our speech and behavior.
We will consider the merits of ideas as the primary driver of our decisions. We will offer our commitments efficiently and succinctly and avoid repetition in order to keep board meetings to a reasonable length.
We will create equitable and inclusive opportunities to promote community engagement.
We will engage in conversations in a way that allows for all perspectives to be shared, considered, and valued.
All right, next is our open forum. This is a time for members of the community to speak before the board. And we will provide two op- different opportunities during tonight's meeting to speak before the board. The first opportunity is during our open forum. The second opportunity is during agenda items where indicated by public comment on our agenda. All speakers must fill out a form indicating their desire to speak. If you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, you may do so with respect to items that are either posted on tonight's agenda or any other matter you wish to share with the board. Please know that Wisconsin's open meetings law prohibits the board from conducting business on matters brought during this open forum. The board also will permit public comment during agenda items, as noted on the board's agenda. During this public participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, board members may engage in dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the board will suspend engagement until all speakers have had a chance to speak. The process for speaking during those agenda items is as follows. The board will first hear the presentation and discuss the agenda item before calling on those who desire to speak. If you want to speak during a specific agenda item, please fill out a form and give it to the board secretary at any point during the meeting. If you desire to speak and haven't yet filled out a form, just indicate that to the board secretary, and you can fill out a form afterwards. The board secretary will provide the names of those wishing to speak to the board member conducting that part of the meeting, and you will be called upon to speak at the appropriate time. Please keep your comments to five minutes. If your comments are longer than five minutes, please feel free to submit written comments. Prior to starting your comments, please provide your name and address. And I will call people up in the order that they were received. First is Alex Minow. Yes, you do.
Is that good?
Yep.
All right. We have a large crowd here, so I will do my best to keep this as quick and directly to what I have written. I also don't want to leave anything off, so. But, good evening, thank you for having me. I just wanted to express a couple sentiments on some important, relevant topics, especially related to kind of the timing of where we're at with some things in our district, primarily focused around our superintendent and a couple other things. I'm here tonight hopefully to provide some useful encouragement as we engage in this very exciting time of important decision-making regarding our next superintendent in conjunction with other important topics like MLSS, retirement, student data, and so on. I've been in the district for about 10 years. My wife has been in the district for a while, too. Between us, we've taught and coached at 16 of our schools. I've taught Benedictine of Students, Assistant Activities Director at six schools. She has taught at eight. And we've also both coached extensively from sixth grade through varsity coaching for most of my tenure in sports, from volleyball, baseball, basketball, football, track, and swimming. I point this out simply to show how we are connected to an unusually large swath of our of not only our school communities, but our community at large. What I gain is perspective and a larger view than probably a lot of people in our district. And therefore, I feel confident in many of my following sentiments. I'm here today because I can't stop thinking about and experiencing two common things nearly every day, or at least every week, for many years now. The first is a frustration with student behavior and how it's dealt with at times, and seeing teachers around me disappear quite frequently. Both are linked in part, and both are systematic issues, not individual issues, and both should be a primary concern when deciding who to hire as our next leader of our great school district. I quickly want to share just a couple pieces of my recent experiences. 10 new staff members at my school last year when I joined. 20 new ones this year and counting. Before this, my last four years at Washington, we had over 20 new staff members every year. Just in the agenda for this meeting alone, you'll find five teachers retiring from my school that I'm currently at, and one leaving in a few weeks for an unrelated and different job. What you don't know is that some of them didn't come into this school year expecting it to be their last. Obviously, these things are sometimes normal, but the rate of departures and reasons why aren't always that clear. However, I highly doubt you truly understand just or understand that many staff at the 16 schools my wife and I cover, as well as other teachers across our great district, sometimes feel a disconnect with what happens each day and how it gets reported back to you. I encourage the board to learn more about this specifically. You obviously know there's a teacher shortage, generally speaking, that's no secret. What you need to know is that we need to stop contributing to our own shortage. Broadly speaking, a primary struggle in Green Bay area public schools is student behavior and meaningful improvement. These numbers and rationales you are often given don't match what many staff experience. In my opinion, PBS needs to go, reteach it until we're blue in the face, doesn't work. And expecting teachers to always be the ones to do more definitely has to end. Such things are why teachers, students, and families avoid or choice out avoid or choice out of Green Bay area public schools. How our next leader will address this has to be a top factor in who we select as our next superintendent. So as I said, I want to provide some encouragement. We're all trusting you to pick the next superintendent. And trust me, we are paying attention. Many staff have been encouraged by increased support some of you have shown us in recent times. It is very, very appreciated. Some is not enough, though. Some of the questionable information about each candidate that has been brought forward by many community members, including myself, leaves us questioning the process a little bit and wanting to know what you know about how these candidates cleared up their major question marks on some of their prior history. I think if you want good faith district-wide from staff members, we all deserve to hear their sides, the sides that they said or gave you guys as to clearing up some of those issues. I encourage not just some of you, but all of you to be connected to and represent us teachers and staff members, and keep us teachers at the forefront of your decision when you choose a next superintendent. I'll finish by encouraging you to honor one thing, that without teachers, our district has nothing. Our kids have nothing. I encourage you to do your best so we can all be our best. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Alex. Next is Noah Becker.
Noah Becker in 1254 Reed Street. You've seen enough of me in past years, so I won't make you listen to this for too long. Pretty short, and similar to other concerns I brought forward. Essentially, especially because the decisions were just made, no one knows if a course is going to run or not. And this extends even more than just, you know, temporary. Well, two kids signed up, so we can't run this class, which is understandable. At West, they've removed the class Physics as an option. Not any advanced AP Physics, just standard Physics. I didn't hear it at the board table, I looked through it, I couldn't find anything. No one was really asked about it, and it seems like, as far as when people as far as when, like, stakeholder groups are talked to, it seems like it didn't happen here. If they're cutting regular Physics, and they also cut the advanced level IB Physics, where you can get more widespread college credit, that'd be the HL course. They got rid of that, too, so they left the IBSL course, where many colleges won't give you credit, and they eliminated the regular one-year Physics class. Now you have to take two years of it if you want to do it. It just seems like no one was really talked to about this. So it seems like the board should just take some control and kind of analyze this situation, just so that we know what's going on. Because a lot of people are more frustrated than I am, and they don't have the patience or time to come to these. So I think it'd be better if the board would just write a policy, you know? Here's, here's kind of what we need to see if the, if the decision's kind of being thought about to not run a course. I think that'd be helpful. I think that'd increase the communication when a course runs or doesn't run, especially on a permanent level like that, where you're permanently getting rid of a course. I think it'd just be better for everyone to be able to voice those concerns or say, here's why it shouldn't run. Or here's, here's the advantage to not running this class. Here, like, you know what I mean? It, it just seems like no one was really presented with any of it. And so that's why a lot of people are frustrated. They have no idea why this was even a necessary thing to do. But since I'm not going to just sit here and complain, I'll give you something happy. AP Chemistry ran at West, and the district should be proud of that, right? That's, that's college credit. That's, you know, it's, it's a good course, and a lot of districts can't run it because you need to have a pretty decent lab in order to be able to do it. So I'm glad that in this district, we have opportunities to run classes like that. And what I'm really looking for is more like standardization and notice about when a course isn't going to run. So that might be like the temporary, well, here, you can't run it because it has two people. But, so a little bit more standardization around that, because it seems like those decisions are kind of already made sometimes. But even more importantly, when a course is not going to run indefinitely, or a course is being killed, I think it'd just be good for everyone to be able to know that. I think the only way to kill a course should be coming to the school board, having the process that you guys do on the rest of this agenda, and instead of that decision being made without the transparency and communication that can happen here. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah, I like the happy news, and I, I have a question. Did they tell, who did you talk to about this course? And they told you they weren't running it, and they just, just nothing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so who, who did you, the principal said we're not running it? Or who told you? Because we're, I'm confused, and here's why, I'll tell you why I'm confused. We haven't finished staffing, so I didn't know where things were at if this was the case. So that's what I, that's why I want to know where that, where it came from, so that we can, I can follow up. That's all.
Yep, I got that from a sophomore who had the course sheet in front of them. And so they saw, hey, Physics isn't on here. And I confirmed that with the teacher who would teach Physics. They said, yep, that is the case. So that's where I, that's where I heard that from, so I confirmed that.
So it was not on the course document where a student could sign up, is that correct? Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Noah. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak before the board? I know we have one person that has indicated they want to speak during the public comments around the wellness recess policy, so we'll call you up then. Seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda. I do want to remind members of the public that you can view the board agenda and handouts, as well as minutes from past meetings, by visiting the district website at www.gbaps.org. Click on "Our District" at the top, and then "Board of Education" on the left. And then on the new-left menu, you will find a link to "Agendas and Minutes." This link will take you to a website called Agenda Manager, where all board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. I'd recommend a most, the motion under minutes. I mean, I entertain the motion under minutes, sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been approved. Next is monitoring reports, and that'll be facilitated by Laura McCoy.
Thank you, Brenda. We're going to be, um, we're going to be having a presentation about multi-level systems of support academic.
Thank you for having us. We will be having a number of people come up during the presentation. We're trying to keep it as concise as possible, but when we're talking about academics related to the three levels of support for universal Tier 1 and Tier Tier 2 and Tier 3 supports for math and literacy, there's quite a bit to talk about. But again, we'll try and keep it as concise as possible. And I'll start off by having Dr. Chartier share some of the guests she's bringing up.
Thank you very much. We are ecstatic to join you tonight with the wonderful work that the professionals in this district provide for the learning of our students every single day. It is a true honor and a blessing to be a part of this team. The purpose of this presentation is to provide an opportunity to share that meaningful work behind the multi-level systems of support and continuous school improvement that is ongoing. Because of the time limitation, we are restricted to a sample size of a very much larger, complex system. Tonight, we'll have some of our educators join us with testimonials and some snippets and videos of recording students and their learning experiences. Very fortunate tonight to have two very talented individuals joining us at the table, Jessica Vandenhavel and Linda Teskey. Jessica is a coach at Sullivan Elementary, and Linda is our Assistant Director of Literacy in the district. Just quickly, I'll let you, you all know, our goals this year around pre-kindergarten literacy was the implementation of our phonological awareness star curriculum. And also the fact that all of our staff members were being trained in language essentials for teaching teachers of reading and spelling, and Jessica's going to elaborate on that in just one moment. The other goal we set out for ourselves is that kindergarten students will receive phonological awareness intervention beginning in September of 2020. And I'd like to add in addition that I just happened to slip my mind, that we are actually working on diligently behind the scenes, that we'll be offering a pre-K, so students leaving pre-K and going into kindergarten, summer school offerings for students who need additional support and just want to enjoy more of our Zephonics adventures and experiences for our summer school offering this year. So with that, I'd like to introduce Jessica. And Jessica's going to lead us and tell us just a little bit more about leading letters in the district.
Thank you for having me tonight. Our 4K staff, coaches, principals, aides have all been participating in the letters training. And the letters training is all about confirming and refining our developmentally appropriate practice for our 4K students. It's focusing on developing our theory around the stages of development through oral language, phonological processing, print knowledge, all through playful instruction and intentional play with the students. It's not a push of kindergarten standards down into 4K. Play is essential for our 4K students, and it's intentional. So this means that we are guiding students to evolve their level of play based on our knowledge of the development of their oral language, phonological processing, and print knowledge. We do have a video from Sadie Becker. She is a 4K classroom teacher at Sullivan Elementary and is exceptional. So if we could start that video.
Words, today is Wednesday. This is Sadie's daily writing, her student news that they participate in as a group. What does that period tell a reader to do? What does that period tell us to do? Stop and take a breath. Luna was our attendance helper today, we're going to write Luna to you in our news. Luna said... All right, listen, Luna, what do you want to tell us about today? I want to be a princess. Ooh, let's get that message in our head. Put up one finger for each of those words as you say it. I want to be a princess. Stand up. And then rehearsal of that message through play. One time for each of those words as you say it. I want to be a princess. Do a jumping jack for each word as you say it. I want to be a princess. Okay, yesterday, we learned about some lunges. One foot forward, one foot back. Do "want" for each word as we say it, you ready? I want to be a princess. Stay steady, turn your body this way. One foot back, let's say it one more time. I want to be a princess. Go ahead and have a slippin', we got it. What was the first word Luna told us? I. She's gonna... I want. What did you hear at the beginning of the word? W. W. You got it. She's doing Lend our Zephonics, and with the print that she's doing. Getting down to the phonemic awareness, all right? Which is, she says, the hearing compared to the words of breaking. And the involvement of this over the year, when I saw her writing at the beginning of the year, when she would do those motions, they're connected to an animal, a horse, she gets them, you know? And they would answer that T with the, that's Timothy Tiger. Now they're to the stage where they're just... I want to be a... Tell this here, say, uh. Sounds like that "you" sound, doesn't it? It's the "a", remember when "it" is by itself? Sometimes it makes that "uh" sound. Check you guys out. I want to be a... And she's very open to visitors, yes, anytime you want to come in. So Brenda, Katie, and Laura were there last year to visit Sadie's classroom. And, and Michelle, yeah, Dr. Langenfeld was there, too. Yes. So what our, our teachers are developing is an elevated sense of noticing and then being able to lift their students through the levels of those stages of learning in 4K.
Thank you very much. Sorry. Next, I would like to take an opportunity, and for our public viewers, I'd like to just, I'm sorry?
Your microphone.
I've never been told I'm so quiet that people can't hear me, but thank you. I'll take that as a compliment. For our public viewers, I would like to touch base on the Board of Education. The Board of Education's chosen assessments for monitoring progress. I'm pitch-hitting tonight, this evening, for Stephen Miller, who cannot be with us. And just a little bit about this particular assessment. This is the assessment that the board has chosen for our Assessment for Progress Monitoring. It is a norm curve equivalent, is actually a normed reference score that is similar to a percentile rank, but is based on equal interval scales. The Great Equivalency is a norm reference score that responds to how students' test performance compares to other students nationally. Just a little bit of information on this is this is a time-adjusted model. So a student may take this in September, but then it's time-adjusted to when they would take it again in December. If you think about what score we might see in our next screen, if we were to see a zero, that would simply mean that the student is making what we'd call expected growth between that interval of time. Anything above in a positive would be accelerated growth. And then a negative would be growth that is not as, probably on track. But we know we have to intervene in between what we get as our score now in our teaching and responsiveness to their learning in order for them to make one year's full growth. I'm very excited this evening to share with you our first sample of our literacy data and our STAR data and early literacy growth data from September to December this past year. If we think about, it's about 20 points, that would be equivalent of a full grade score. If the number, let's work with kindergarten, is 7.7. If it were to say zero, then that student, those students, average students in kindergarten have made expected growth for that time period. have made expected growth for that time period between September and December. Now they've made a 7.7 positive growth, which means the students are making accelerated growth to almost, well, if it's 20, we do the math. We'll see that they've made nearly a quarter of a growth plus anticipated. So it's accelerated growth, and that's what we are obviously looking for in closing our, our achievement gaps.
So this accelerated growth is really something that we need to champion. It's, it's even the zero, as we said, would be what we would expect, but to have this rate of growth with our students is really, meaning that we're having significantly higher impact than usual with our, our earliest learners, which is very influential as, and the system as a whole.
So I just want to make mention that this growth did not happen by accident. It has been a concerted effort. And I look behind me of the administrators that lead schools every day and the educators in front of our children every day. It is absolutely a commitment to intentional teaching and being responsive to our students during their learning. This is absolutely phenomenal data for anyone that would like to come and visit me because I'm limited to time tonight, as John told me, I'm limited to time tonight. The, the outcomes rate now that we have in our preliminary data is absolutely a huge shift than anything we have seen in the past. And there are many reasons why. And I'm going to let Ms. Teske speak to the work that we're doing in our schools that led to the shifts that we see in specifically, all of these are good. I want to jump right away to the kindergarten and pre-K because of our efforts to that early intervention. But in all reality, there are some...
Nancy, sorry, Linda took, Linda turned it off.
Thank you, Linda.
We need, we need that for closed caption, so oops, you've got, did you?
I simply just want to say that all of the data is remarkable. It's absolutely accelerated growth in our youngest grades, but if we look back in our journey, in our previous board presentations, we were very focused and we were very intentional and where we wanted to go as a district in servicing, in servicing our youngest learners. And I think Jessica spoke very eloquently to that tonight. I would really like these two professionals to speak to what's going on every day in those schools that have made this significant impact all the way through grade five in the area of literacy.
I'll start from the district level and then Jessica can go into the building level. Is we've really worked as, working on systems of analysis of data to be responsive and monitoring student achievement throughout every process within a system, within a building, within a district. Implementation of a scope and sequence and being more intent, more intensive, I guess, and targeted within the universal in working a workshop approach, which means that you do some intentional teaching, direct instruction, and then you support the scaffolding out to students' independence. At a building level, Jessica can talk about how that works at her building level.
We've had a lot of developments with our CLTs, our collaborative learning teams in the last couple of years, where grade level teachers will get together to analyze their data, figure out the students, who they are going to target within their tier one universal intervention. Also, teachers have really refined their practice on the universal curriculum and that is affecting the students as well in a positive way. The STAR is a lagging indicator of what we see happening in our classrooms every day. What I've seen with CLTs is teachers banding together, setting specific student goals for the learners in their SLOs, developing their professional practice goals around their practices more in, with more intent. And it's really moving our students forward and we're seeing a lot of growth too at our, within Sullivan too, is what I can speak to, but...
Thank you very much, Jessica and Linda. The next set of data that I'd like to preference is our, our secondary data. And the, this sixth, grade six through 11 data indicates that students are on the track of making approximately one full grade level of growth by the end of the academic year. And to that, we see that there are some lagging, some lagging data, so you're probably wondering what it is we're going to do about that. And I'm absolutely ecstatic tonight to have the East, three of the East High School educators, Amy, Amy and Jen, are going to join us this evening to share with you the collaborative work that they have been engaged in in supporting our high school students in meeting their literacy goals. It is not only inspiring, but absolutely confirming that we are on the right path. So thank you, ladies. We'll need to, we'll need to activate that, please. Here you go.
And only one can be on at a time. Yeah, so, yeah.
Now we get why it's been happening.
As soon as someone else presses, you go off.
Excellent. Well, thank you for having us tonight. Thank you to Nancy and Linda for inviting us tonight to speak with you. We're really excited about what we brought for you tonight. Just a quick introduction, my name is Jen Ditzman. I am the classroom ELA 10 teacher where we have been doing our research.
I'm Amy Gable, one of the reading interventionists.
I'm Amy Ancelotti, other reading interventionist.
Okay, just to start, to start with our vision. Ultimately, we're, our vision is for a push-in reading intervention for tier two. Ultimately, right to meet the needs of all of our readers. And additionally, to continue developing a culture of literacy at East High School. So the idea is instead of pulling students out of, or pulling out from study hall or someplace else for reading intervention, our reading interventionists, Amy and Amy, have been pushing in to the ninth and 10th grade classrooms, into our universal ELA nine and 10 classrooms. So the good news, and we love to celebrate this at East, is that East met expectations this year. In fact, we are proud to have the highest rating of all the high schools in the district. But we want to make sure that we continue to improve in helping all of our students grow. We believe, and our data suggests, that this model could help us meet the needs of more students in the past.
And why the change? We use our data to guide our instruction. Over 60% of our students are reading below grade level. Of that 60%, 17 students are EL and 16% of those students have different abilities. This has been an ongoing process at East and we are always looking to better our UDL model. This push-in model improves our ability to meet the needs of a significantly higher percentage of students and more students are being supported by more adults in the universal setting.
All right, so the big picture, it's important to understand, right, some of the variables for universal instruction. The instructional model that this intervention utilized is part of what we found to be one of our reasons for success. This is a universal setting that utilizes research and evidence-based practices in literacy. As Linda was talking about in elementary school, that workshop approach. So to start, 75 minutes in a trimester schedule allows us to have this time every day to grow all learners through conferring, word work, a focus lesson, collaborative work time, and time to share out and put the cap on learning, right? That workshop model. The slide shows roughly about how much time we spend for each component. But to be clear, we are able to cover the district curriculum as well as provide time for conferring every single day. So this is not replacing any of the district curriculum. It is supporting it and supporting our students in accessing it.
So in reading interventions, small groups have time to practice conferring the reading and vocabulary strategies so that they can transfer these skills to their linguistics courses and other core classes. But in the workshop model, students get to practice these same skills with the class curriculum, creating better understanding and more opportunities to engage with their teachers, with other students, and to dive deeper into those focus lessons. So it's fostering an independence. Students are willing to take more risks and work with skills and strategies that they aren't always comfortable with.
Excuse me, as part of the process, we begin to create materials for our teachers that are in the classroom and also for anybody else who may be experiencing the push-in model. The first example, if you can bring, do you have the clicker? This is data that we provide for each classroom teacher, whether or not they have a push-in, and it's again based on the NCEs that Nancy referenced. So they'll all get a picture of their classroom to use as they need. And if you were to scroll down, you'll see the other divisions and the other categories. So it's based on their NCE score. And those are how teachers know who to target. The second document, if we can go back, lists the specific strategies. We have identified, which you can see on there, or you can see on your PowerPoint, hopefully. Okay, go to the next one. The third is an example of how we've taken the LDG. I thought we opened these.
We'll make sure that they're open for the public.
Because we did go through and open them for the public earlier. At least we thought we did. But the third is an example of how we have taken the LDG books and added scaffolding to those with specific reading strategies based on each individual book that the students may be reading. And then the last example is, probably not, oh. There's an example of some additional scaffolding. This is an LDG book that our students might read in 10th grade. And so students who, ELL students who might need vocab acquisition or whatever, they'll have this as a scaffold or a reference document.
So in our... In our universal classroom, in talking about conferring, we meet with kids one-on-one with what we call just write books of their choice, as well as group books per our district curriculum during those spans of time. Conferring with each child one-on-one is the pinnacle of differentiation, meeting the needs of each and every child. Conferring with students one-on-one assists in developing authentic relationships, understanding each student and who they are as a reader and as a learner, assisting in student goal-setting, improving student confidence as readers and learners as well as building engagement. It also allows us to intentionally teach and provide feedback in the areas of comprehension, vocabulary acquisition, fluency, critical thinking skills, and specific skill gaps, as Amy will talk to you about next.
The last area of our focus was that we analyzed the ACT standards and correlated those skills with universal reading comprehension strategies, which you'll see a document there as well, hopefully. Additionally, we aligned the academic language from the ACT with our universal learning curriculum and intervention strategy. So if we're asking for a main idea in our universal, is that the way that it would be referred to on the ACT? So that they're, you know, they know that they're looking for the same type of thing. So aligning our language, does that one work? Okay, so you can see those are the categories for the ACT. Again, color-coded according to the NCE averages. And in the far right are the strategies. If you can go back to the other document, hopefully at some point. But those are specific strategies for that specific skill that ACT is asking. And then the part that we're all excited about, we won't bring up these documents, but this is, you can look at them later, but these are the two teachers that were involved. The next slide has them aggregated for you, which will cut to the chase. Teacher one had two push-ins, hours one and four. You can see the data again, those are based on NCE scores. So if we look at hour four, they have a 4.1 average gain in that class. That's a year and a quarter's growth in one trimester. So that's pretty amazing and we're pretty excited about it. And you can see the other, the other things, the other teachers too, who are involved in our, not, not really a scientific study, but you know. So that's the data.
And while we are admittedly very excited with our first set of data, we are most pleased with the increase in the students' perceptions of themselves as learners. As educators, we know how important that is. As teachers in the classroom, we see and hear student language change from disengaged fake readers to engaged kids who devour books. That's the part you don't see in the data. Here is a tiny sampling of students who wanted to share their experience from trimester one, but I can tell you now, this is our second trimester, we're increasing these kinds of testimonials, testimonials every day. So with that, we just want to end with a few of our student samples who wanted to share their experience with you. If you could click on each of the videos. All right, you can start.
While I'm talking to teachers, I don't know, I think it like provides a different, um, different, I can give my perspective of what the book is like. And, you know, I can get some feedback on like, if I read, like when I was reading to you last time, I didn't know that, like if I read, if I went back and like corrected myself, it was like a good way, it was a good way, a good mannerism for reading. I think like I read like two books now. I think it's just I've been moving really slow on this one because it's a little less interesting, but I think I can, I can power through it, get another one.
I like being able to talk to teachers about books because then they can help me find books that I like the book I read. And then I guess it just helps me because then I can read more books about that genre or by the same author, on the same topic, I guess.
Okay, you can start.
My name's Elizabeth and this year I've read three books. And last year I've read none, so this year it's been way different and now I'd love to read.
So thank you so much for your time.
You go upper and lowercase in all the red sections, is that a, is there a...
Oh, I think that's just the font we chose.
Okay, because it just kind of, I thought maybe there was something therapeutic or potential or something like that.
A layout and that's what happened.
Okay, all right.
We do want our lunch.
The red.
Discussion about... Sorry, yeah, we did.
So just so I'm understanding your data, which looks great, the, the, all of the kids in this class are intervention students, is that correct?
No, if you, I wish we could, is there a way to bring up that initial document? If you can go, the data that we provide teachers, we have them color-coded, yeah, that, just the teacher data received. If you pull that up, you'll see the gold are the targeted, that Amy and I would, if we're in a classroom, we might rotate heavily with those kids. But we do intervene with all of them and we do visit all of them to differentiate on the upper and the lower level. And then if you get to the yellow, so the, the, I don't know what color it is, but the gold and the yellow, those are definitely the ones that Amy and I are gonna double hit. That's what the district considers below proficiency, according to the NCE. The ones in the green would be considered proficient and the ones in the purple, purple or pink, whatever you call it, are above proficiency. So that's based on NCEs.
And so you're working with the, the top two?
Yeah.
Mostly.
Mostly, yeah, we'll double hit those, we'll, we'll definitely... Mostly, yeah, we'll double hit those, we'll, we'll definitely, those we'll spend more time with. Yes, those are our targeted, the reading interventionists targeted students. Do you want to add anything?
Right, and one thing uh that we could add here is that, um, especially with some of the, we use a screener to determine some of the skill deficiencies that we see with students in addition to words their way data, um, STAR data. Um, and then the interventionists, like, so Amy and I work together. Um, Amy and I sit down and, and decide, you know, what kinds of interventions we're going to use for specific target, targeted students. So it's very intentional um, uh, when we approach students from, so I will have a certain intervention that I'm using from the universal perspective. So I am still working as a classroom teacher with all the students. Uh, but then we are working together to make sure that we are intentional about for our targeted students, how we're working those interventions within that universal setting.
And you can just see that just as a side note on the end, there's a screener column and that's what Jen's referring to, that we give them a short reading passage and then we divide them up into those skill categories, whether it's comprehension, main idea, those types of things. And that's how we know how to focus our intervention strategies.
So then if I go to the slide that has the data explained, it's a few slides. So that teacher one is using this model, teacher two is teaching like everybody did last year, is that?
Uh, teacher two is, is new to the workshop, she's not been trained in it. She's kind of being mentored by Jen, so she is using some of the workshop, but not fully implemented. And I did push in um only the first 30 minutes with her second hour only.
Oh, okay.
So she had no push-in first and fourth hour.
Got it, okay.
And then Jen had a, or the teacher one had a, had a full push-in. She's the experienced uh workshop model teacher. And then um also had a full push-in fourth hour.
Okay, so this wasn't, like you said, this isn't a control, uh, it's just an example of two teachers, one that's running and one that's still working and acquiring the skill sets. Yeah, okay, great, thank you. This looks really promising, um, with what you're doing. Um, have you talked about scaling it up? I assume you have more than two um ELA classes that
Yes.
that could benefit from this. So help me understand what your current situation is and um what scaling up would be in an ideal world where we have lots of money.
I work with the LA nine teachers and currently they are last first in the workshop model, but I am pushing in two and a half hours this trimester. Um, and I feel like we've had great success just getting books into their hands that are appropriately placed and kids, um, like they're, to talk about the reading. I had a student this week say, you haven't talked to me in a long time about a book. And I was like, all right, let's sit down.
Yeah, so are there other ELA classes that could use this, but there aren't enough people? Like you.
If you're asking if we would benefit from additional reading intervention?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And what, and, and how many, I mean, obviously, you know.
How much will you, how many will you give us?
Yeah, I know, I know, I'm not, I can't promise anything, but I just, help me understand the big picture of if you had everything you needed.
So if we could have two, I mean, two more, because we, we're only able to work, she works with nine and there's two to three teachers and I work with 10, two to three teachers. I couldn't cover all, even all of my 10 teachers la- last try. I was, you know, I had to break it up a little bit or whatever, so more, as many as you can, you know.
Yeah, but, but two more.
Right, ideally, I think one interventionist per grade level would be
Yes.
a really great place to start.
Because in the high schools, we do not have a lit, sorry, we do not have any lit coach. So, you know, that would be definitely beneficial because we only have enough of us. Plus, we're, we also do the T, we also do the tier two interventions if they're needed. So we would, we would have to be pulled out of, you know, one of our universals if there were tier two students that needed intervention, so.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to get a understanding of the lay of the land, so thanks.
Sure, and I was gonna say, so part of this is covered under our next steps, uh, which comes at the end of the presentation. No, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that when we're considering the needs, we're considering within the scope. But I'm vastly, just amazingly impressed with the work that's being done at East, both through the trimester system and through the, the ELA department with the, the reading supports. When we talk about closing achievement gaps and raising the learning for all students, when we've gone from a district being at, uh, meeting few expectations to meet solidly into meeting expectations, it's work like this that has brought us there. So we want to thank the group very much for their, their, their part in the presentation.
Before you go, I thank you very much. Jen, could you, Amy and Amy, I really appreciate the, the incredible work you're doing. You can really see it in the numbers. Jen, I know you're sitting at a state level representing uh ELA teachers from across the state around literacy. Can you just share with the public and with the board um the, the work you've been doing? Because it's a really critical time.
Absolutely, I don't have anything prepared, but I would love to talk about uh the work that we're doing um at the state level. Uh, and I think it directly aligns with um kind of our vision as a district. And that is with equity at the center of all things that we do, right? And the idea, the ideas that we are working with right now are um to, um, well, we've revised and those standards are up for public comment. We'll be, uh, March 1st looking at those standards. But we've revised them in order to be more culturally responsive um over time. And so there have been a number of changes that have happened and I'm really excited um about that work. And I do know our district leaders here um will be par, uh, asked to be a part of that team so that they are part of that rollout and developing those instructional materials that best support um our, our uh learning and progression with those new state standards. Uh, but it's very exciting being in the state of Wisconsin where uh we know that we have gaps to close and we know we have uh glaring deficiencies. And it's really excited to be um from Green Bay, having, right, our leadership being asked and being able to represent um Green Bay in a place where we are fighting for doing everything we can um for all students. So thank you for that opportunity.
Well, as we transition, it just doesn't get better than that, does it? When you think that that's your high school's, when children, students can say to you, they didn't read a book last trimester and they love to read today. That's really what our goal as educators is in the world of literacy. My enthusiasm continues with the um great work that we have been doing in our area of mathematics. And uh to join me tonight, uh, we, I have Angie Lacome. Angie is our curriculum coordinator, oversees the elementary math uh programming in our schools. And she's going to talk a little bit to us about our wonderful new adventure that she's been actually investigating over the past two years that wasn't ready when we brought Bridges K five to you a couple of years ago.
Hi there, thank you for having me. Um, in addition to uh being a curriculum coordinator here in the district office, I also support schools as a curriculum resource implementation specialist. So I am also at Red Smith and Wicquiac for part of the time that I serve. So I do come with uh the district and um building level perspective when we're discussing these types of things. Um, and also I am a parent of two students in Green Bay Public Schools. Um, so anyway, we um started with pre-K, as Nancy said. It wasn't prepared for us when, when we originally introduced the Bridges resources to Green Bay. And um as soon as it became available, we got our hands on it and we got some teachers involved um to try it out in our schools because we do have half-day, um, four-day-a-week programs. And so that's a little different than what the resource offers in general. So we wanted to see how it would work in some classrooms before we um kind of used it for the entire district. So um over the past two years, I've worked with a few teachers from across the um, uh, across the district. So we have teachers at Sullivan, MacArthur, Red Smith, and two at Sullivan. Um, oh, and then there's one at Color, I'm sorry, in a Head Start program there. So um what they've noticed this year especially, they get together and they plan together and um they absolutely love the resource. Um, they are seeing students talk about math and they're able to have collaborative conversations with kindergarten teachers in their buildings to talk about how students are doing. Uh, and the thing that they say the most is that the kids don't really know that they're doing math, they are just having fun. Um, and so they absolutely love it and I get to go into the classrooms every week. So I visit all of their classrooms and support them with the implementation of it, answer questions, work with kids. And so I do see firsthand that um the kids are really having a lot of fun as they go through their, their day. Sadie Becker is one of the teachers, so you saw her in Action and Literacy and you're probably, maybe you noticed, Emily and I noticed, she, um, as she was saying the words, she was doing her finger patterns from Bridges. So she's really bringing everything um together as well. So um, we were just gonna play one quick video, there's three there for you to look at. The first two, Number Corner and Workplaces, those are students telling you about Number Corner and Workplaces. Um, they, they talk about their, their little cricket friend that hops around and plays math games on them. Um, and then the video, the last video I wanted to share, share with you here though is talking about um what the teachers have said. So I asked them to fill out um a little survey for me and give some feedback on how the resource was going. And so these are some of the comments that they said. And um I think you'll get a gist of kind of how things are going.
This curriculum takes math standards concepts that need to be taught and gives us developmentally appropriate lessons and activities to help students achieve success. Every day, there is something presented that challenges my students. During Number Corner, students are asked to predict the next calendar marker and explain their thinking. Many of the activities are play-based, Play-Doh manipulatives are projects. There's a section on Mathematizing the Classroom, which gives ideas on what you can include in free-choice centers' playtime to continue developing math skills. Workplaces allow students the opportunity to engage in math learning that is most interesting to them as an individual. Workplaces provide multiple opportunities for problem solving. The games engage all children, no matter what level they are at. The tips in the teacher manual give teachers ideas on how to make it more challenging or how to help with learners that are struggling. All the resources are there for you. It's easy to prep and follow daily plans. Love that everything is available on the site, you can access it at home to plan. Kids love the activities, investigations, and workplaces. Teachers and parents love them as well.
Like, what do you do at workplaces?
Just play.
Play?
One of, one of, you play at each table, try to, well, sometimes there's new ones.
Do you have a favorite workplace?
Yeah, it's the red one.
He's featured in the other videos too, if you want to see more of him.
Thank you very much, Angie. I'm gonna have Angie stay at the table as we take a closer look at the growth data, the STAR growth data from September to December, the first four months of school. And the, thank you, Angie. Um, and the fact that, uh, again, this is the NORM curve equivalent, NORM reference scores. Note that if this were zero, that would be your anticipated growth. And you can see that every single one of our grades is making accelerated growth, some as much as a quarter um plus um within four months, uh accelerated growth as to what would be expected. This, we are extremely pleased with. Um, there's no doubt in any of our minds that work most very closely to this work, that it was the previous work done over the last four years that set the foundation with your commitment as a board to Advantage Math Recovery, that strong numeracy and understanding of numeracy, that foundation, so that when we did adopt a resource, the teachers really were ready to fly with it, uh, make adjustments to their instructional practices, their strategies and the methodologies that are found in Bridges, which complements Advantage Math Recovery. Next, I'm going to just uh have Angie touch briefly on some of the supports uh in Bridges that we have in professional learning, that we have provided our, our, our K five staff this year.
So in addition to offering administrators professional learning, um, at, um, sessions that they come to at the district office, and then um the curriculum resource implementation specialist also receives some professional learning so they can support teachers in schools. Um, in addition to those two things, we've also offered professional evening sessions for teachers to attend where the curriculum resource specialists and myself offer professional learning to teachers. Two years ago, we had had a consultant come in and we had grade level sessions where there were all teachers from the same, from the same grade level came here to district office. And we received feedback um in the form of a, we filled out feedback surveys after the sessions. And the teachers had indicated that they would really want smaller sessions um that had more opportunities for uh true collaboration, is kind of how they described it. So what we moved to this year was we created cohorts of buildings. And so then we were able to offer teachers a smaller opportunity based at a building so they could see the classrooms of the grade level that they're visiting, um, or that they teach in, so they could see other classrooms. And then also we adjusted our agenda so that we would have some professional learning that we provided um based on the topics that the teachers had mentioned within their um surveys. So for example, in the fall session, we had Number Corner was the topic that teachers wanted to talk about. And so we offered a little professional learning, we had a video from a Green Bay teacher. We've done um a lot of time, I've spent a lot of time in classrooms getting to know teachers and um finding great examples for other teachers to learn from. So now we have a collection of Green Bay videos that we can use. We show that at the professional learning sessions and then we give them time to just collaborate with the other teachers who are in attendance. Um, originally, we had hoped to have more teachers attend, um, but not, there weren't as many as we expected. So we did have to do some combining of um K two versus having a Kinder first, second. So we couldn't, um, just because of low numbers, we wanted to make sure we had true collaboration and they would be able to have that difference of opinions that they wanted to hear. So we needed to do a little bit of combining. But even with that, we were able to serve about 180 teachers so far this year. We have uh another session, another winter session coming up this week, and then we have three coming up in the spring. So um this quote that I put up here really speaks to what many of the feedback responses that we received have gotten. This one I just loved because she kind of, he or she, I should say, um, just kind of captured everything that was coming up from, we love being able to see a Green Bay teacher with Green Bay students um working this resource. We love to be able to hear from colleagues from different buildings. Um, although it's great, they all say, it's great to collaborate in our own building. It's also nice to hear what other people are doing in other buildings to see how those things work. So this quote just kind of captures um the success that we've had with those evening sessions.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Angie. Next, I'd like to uh have close attention, I'm gonna ask if Cindy Cantwell, thank you Angie, if Cindy Cantwell, our secondary uh math coordinator can join us at the table. Uh, again, this is the last bank of NCE data that we have and this is our uh sixth through 11th grade um STAR data from September to December um based on our NCE change. All grade levels currently demonstrate typical growth in the first four months. Um, those that again, um, are not as prominent or on, on course to meeting that end-of-the-year benchmark. Um, Cindy is here to talk uh with us, to share with us some of the proactive um work that we're doing at the secondary level in mathematics.
Hello, thank you for having me. Um, I think you'll see on the next side slide, a lot of the supports that we've um put in place this year with um the background that Nancy and Angie had talked about with um the really change in uh practice and change in understanding of numeracy that Advantage Math Recovery had brought to the table, that um, that foundational knowledge. That's what we're striving to do at secondary as well. So showing, um, showing you some of the different supports in place, the monthly early release days, in, in Algebra one especially. Um, in August, we met with teachers and talked about um that mathematical rigor, uh procedural fluency application, and then really thinking about that conceptual understanding that's needed and asking them what of the NCTM math teaching practices that they felt would be the most beneficial and change their practice. And so you can see there that the focus areas that um, that algebra team decided on were implementing tasks that promote reasoning and problem solving. Um, they've committed to um im- implementing at least one of those really conceptual uh deep-thinking tasks per unit and um getting student discourse in place uh at secondary and um listening to the teachers talk about uh. Listening to the teachers talk about with Bridges, using the elementary and the student discourse there, that's what we're trying to get in place at secondary, as well as students talking to each, to each other and not just listening to a teacher and taking notes, which is very much the traditional math that we probably all learned in that method as well. So a lot of the professional learning we've been doing this year is around those teaching practices. And one of the things we're also going to do is, and you can see on there, is teachers, second, all secondary teachers being AVMR, one, two, and fraction trained, so that we really have that deep common understanding of that numeracy development. And then, once we have that common language and common understanding, we can make sure that we can build on that with those teaching practices. Also making sure that we also have building administrators and department chairs informed in all of this practices as well, and what we share with teachers. So I, we've, we've had a lot of really great collaboration and support this year, every month, in all these different areas that you can see. And you can also see some of the feedback of that professional development that I've shared with you and bullet points at the bottom.
Thank you. Yeah. I know there have been teachers in the past that have used flipped classroom methodology. Is that something that's still ongoing with some teachers, or you've decided that's not as effective as other things?
Um, I think it's going to, it depends on whether students have access to that technology at home to be able to view those videos or use that Google Classroom. So I think that's still a possibility, but I think our focus has been like more collaborative tasks, and then teachers synthesizing that student discourse to get at those big ideas in, in the classroom setting.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Andrew?
I'm not, I'm not saying that the, the flipping classroom thing is by any means the only way to do it, but is it, would you say it's by now, after some time of having this rolled out, is it more or less universally known that there can be access with the, the hotspots and the laptops, or is that not necessarily universally understood yet? I've seen more and more about it in buildings, but there's a difference sometimes between announcing the availability and people really knowing how to take advantage.
I, I, I do agree that teachers know it's available for students. Like I said, I think the, the focus is teachers really building that, those tasks and those lessons in the classroom. That's what I've seen more teachers do with number talks and getting students collaborating and working in, at their tables, not desks and rows anymore and things like that. So I think as we start to make that shift at secondary, especially high school, I can see some of those mini lessons maybe and things being more in a flipped way. But that really hasn't been our main focus.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Cindy to stay in, if Emily Thomas could please join us at the table in the event there would be any questions. This is an untimely time to talk about Tier Two and Tier Three interventions, primarily because the interventions are in flux. In other words, we have students exiting intervention and students entering intervention. But we thought the data that we'd share with you at this time are the number of students receiving intervention in literacy and in mathematics, both in Tier Two and Tier Three. And I've asked Emily and Cindy to join us in case you might have any questions regarding the intervention, how they get to intervention, the intervention system. But at this time, to give you the raw data would be a little misleading because of the influx of intervention at this time. It's, it's an ongoing, continuous improvement, students moving in and out and making adjustments. So the data speaks for itself, there are 744 students. As of the time I prepared this report, it may have changed by now. And 121 students in Tier Three in literacy and in math, 772 students in a Tier Two math intervention, and in Tier Three, 36 students in a math intervention. Okay, if there are no questions, thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
And we appreciate everybody's patience as we go through this. We're now moving on to our next steps, which are very exciting. There are some really cutting edge pieces that I think will not only lead the work being done in Green Bay, but, but quite potentially work being done throughout the state. And Nancy and her team have been very instrumental in, in making sure that that work is productive and thoughtfully based on years and years of, of work. Michelle always talks about the analogy of watering the bamboo tree and, and waiting for that bamboo tree to really sprout. This is the year that things are just powering forward in a number of different areas.
Just when you think you've heard it all, just wait till we have for you next. First of all, next, moving into next year, we'll have our, our kindergarten teachers, as well as our first grade teachers, being trained in the professional, in letters that Jessica spoke so eloquently about this evening. Also, we will be, as we had planned, providing kindergarten students phonological awareness and intervention beginning in September. In the past, that intervention would have started in January, and we know that early intervention is prevention, ensuring that there are no gaps, we don't allow those gaps to take place. I also would like to add that this would be the first summer school offering for pre-K children transitioning into kindergarten, and are actually our pre-K teachers. Mary McCabe is helping us to arrange that, and our pre-K teachers are signing up to be the instructors for that opportunity for our youngest learners. Also, as Angie had mentioned, we'll be bringing forward and moving forward with our Bridges pre-K implementations, will be fully implemented in Bridges, pre-K five throughout our elementary schools. And also in March, I believe, correct, Dr. Langenfeld, that we'll be bringing forward an opportunity, for a possible opportunity for increased interventionists that are actually academic language specialists, and there's more to come on that, where we'll have more of an opportunity to speak more deeply on what does that really mean.
I think the work that Nancy has been doing with the, with the staff and the supports, looking at more deeply at dyslexia types of presentations that students have and gaps and the work that's being done. Right now, the state of Wisconsin obviously is really not in a great place when it comes to literacy, and the conversation at a state level is really around how do we meet the needs of all children, in particular those students who display, I, I don't know how you would qualify, quantify it, but dyslexia-like concerns, and how do we address those. One of the things that's been happening is I'm sitting with the five, five largest school districts and the state superintendent to really have deeper conversations about that. The intention is to bring forward the literacy people from each of our districts and have deep conversation about what our current reality looks like, and then take it to the next level and bring in people very well-versed in literacy and dyslexia to talk more deeply about what options and opportunities are there. Dr. Warren's name is part of that work, but there's also many specialists in the state and across the country to help inform what we're trying to do. At the end of the day, we all know that we need to take a, a, a different path, but that doesn't mean necessarily that we define what that is. So, and I know that legislation, Laura, you'll probably talk about that a little bit, about the dyslexia legislation and that piece when you do your update. So a lot moving right now, a lot, lot more to come as well.
Thank you very much. And last but not least, we're currently working diligently with the senior leadership at secondary in developing a multi-year plan for the implementation of disciplinary literacy, more to come on that. And also, as you had Amy, Amy and Jen share with you tonight, a collaborative review of our secondary literacy intervention structures and practices. I want to thank you all very much for this opportunity. It's very difficult to condense the magnitude of work that is going on behind the scenes every day. And again, we're very fortunate in Green Bay to have the professionals working with us in the, in our school district that bring it every day on behalf of our children. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Does anybody have any questions? Looks like we're good then.
I have to answer.
Thank you very much.
That concludes my during reports.
All right, thank you, Laura. Next is superintendent's update. I'll turn that over to Dr. Langenfeld.
Thank you. I'd like to begin with the calendar. There's a lot of items on the calendar tonight, and again, these are posted as well, but I know that there's been a lot in the media about this, but I also want to remind our public that the public meet and greet for superintendent candidate Sonia Stewart is February 19th, from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. here at the district office building in room 331. And certainly want everyone to come out to meet her. And then there's a special board meeting that'll convene in closed session at 6:15 thereafter, which is part of the superintendent interviews, and that's at the Northland. On February 20th, it is a meet and greet for superintendent candidate Stephen Merly, again at 4:30 to 6 o'clock here in the district office building, room 331. And then again, the special board meeting to convene in closed session for the interview as well with the superintendent candidate at the Hotel Northland as well. February 24th is a special board meeting to convene in closed session for deliberation for the superintendent candidate at noon here at the district office building, and then the special board meeting at 5 o'clock, district office building as well, here in the same room, 331. February 27th is the ICSC meeting with our students, student leaders here in the boardroom at 7:30. And then also, on February 27th, we have a special board meeting. Where will we begin conversations, I believe, I think they both are special board meetings, the 26th and 27th will be around redesign 2020, which is the proposals around possible options that the board might consider around our schools, and it's coming up. So those two dates are on there as well. March 2nd is the Teaching and Learning Work Session at 6 o'clock here in the boardsroom. And March 2nd is also immediately following will be the organizational support work session meeting. Regular board meeting is the 9th, and then we have spring break the 16th and 20th. So again, the March board meetings are very close together, March 2nd and March 9th. And that concludes the calendar, but all of that is posted. In addition to that, the next item I have is just a, I wanted to make sure that the community was aware that the Howe Community School and Resource Center were featured in the Press Gazette article to talk about the community school concept. As you recall, Howe Community School is the first of, we hope, more and many of community schools here in the Green Bay area, public schools. In partnership with the Resource Center and United Way is the anchor partner. And I want the public to be aware, if you haven't already heard, that the United Way as anchor partner is in the communities that surround Howe Community School. They are engaging in what they call community conversations, inviting the residents to come and talk with them and to work and problem solve together. They have met last Friday at the Navarino Neighborhood and Neighborhood Works, and then they've got two more opportunities coming up, February 21st at Whitney Park and Johannes Park. And then that's from 1:30 to 3:30, and then also downtown at the Aging and Disability Resource Center, and that's on February 24th. So two more opportunities, the 21st and the 24th. 5:30 to 7:30 is at the Aging and Disability Resource Center as well. I think one of the things I just wanted to draw attention to is the fact that the results are showing very positive results, that the partnership is resulting, and this is the second year working together in the community school concept, and what they're seeing is that results are paying off. They're seeing better student test scores, more connections with their families, and greater solutions to meet the challenges of students, particularly around transportation and eyesight. Students are being issued glasses, which is very important. Often, we've done screenings for years, but not always being able to provide those glasses. So I know that Kim Shanick in particular has made that her, her life's purpose around making sure that children have those glasses and working in partnership with the Howe Community School Resource Center and United Way. Great article in the Press Gazette, if you haven't seen it, I encourage you to take a peek at it. The next item I have is just an update on Public Schools Week, and I just want to make sure that everyone is aware, and we invite everyone to join us in celebrating Public Schools Week 2020, coming up February 24th through 28th. This is a week-long national celebration of our public schools intended to not only shine a light on the great work that's going on in our public schools, but also to recognize the teachers, staff members, principals, volunteers, parents, administrators, school board members, everyone who plays such a critical role in helping our students succeed. And as we think about our public schools, we recognize they are such an important part of our community, and everyone plays a great part in this, and it's really important to advocate for our schools. We take great pride in them and recognize that they are, they are critically important to the future of our, our state, our community, and so forth, and it really takes all of us working together. Lori Blakesley has put together a social media campaign, and I want to make sure everyone is aware of that. The first, the first day out of our celebration, it says, "Tell us what you love about your public school." So we encourage everyone to participate in the social media campaign as well, shines a light on many things that are going on in our schools, and we wanted you to be aware of that. So that's coming up. And then, the next item I have, we began a conversation, our principals did, meeting with the Board of Education, and we would like to engage in another date, if we could, to talk about not only the concerns and, and the opportunities that are available in partnership that came out of the last meeting, but I know that the board is coming up in March to have further discussion about the dress code, and this is something that we talked about that might be a really important, not might, is a very important conversation that both the board and principals would like to have. So I'm looking for dates, and when I look at March, I have to share with you that probably the best week, as I looked at all the conferences and everything that are available, it would be the week of the 23rd after spring break, and I don't know if there's any availability on board members' calendars to do that. And then if so, which would be your preference of date?
I'm only available the 26th and 27th that week. I assume people don't want to meet on Friday, therefore I'm only available on the 26th.
Fridays wouldn't be preferred.
Yeah.
That would work.
Is anybody, is anybody not available on the 26th?
26th?
26th, yeah.
I didn't know the 26th.
Okay. And we did it five last time?
Ron, does that work for you? That works for you? Great.
Did we start at 5 o'clock?
That was at 5.
5, yeah. So 5 to 7, okay.
So we'll set that up, and that was easier than I thought it was going to be, which is great. So we'll go for the 26th from 5 to 7. Thank you so much for that. And then the last item, I have some really exciting news. There's been a lot of things to celebrate. We have two staff members, Diana Del Becky and also Lisa Merkel, who will be honored. They're part of the 2020 University of Wisconsin-Green Bay Outstanding Recent Alumni winners coming up. They're being honored for their contributions for the profession, their contributions to the university, and their community as well as the world. And so they will be honored as distinguished alumni on so, they will be honored as distinguished alumni on Friday, February twenty-eighth. And more to come on that, there's, out with that, we'll, we'll make sure, I think, our goal is to bring them forward to the board so you can acknowledge and we can give a little more, little more background on that. And recently, I think it was Friday, we learned that we have three students and three staff members who are being recognized as Herb Cole winners this year, which is probably a, the largest group that I've experienced in, in, I think, since I've been here. We have three students who are receiving the Excellence Scholarship, they are recipients who have demonstrated excellence in academic arena and high motivation to achieve, displayed a broad range of activity and leadership outside the academic setting, and have shown strong promise for succeeding in college and beyond, and we'll invite them to a board meeting. Lauren Benetti from Green Bay Preble High School, Benjamin Frieden from, from Southwest, and Colin McCabe from Southwest, so we've got three winners in that particular arena, and they get ten thousand dollar scholarships each, which is a very big deal. And then, also, we have three staff members who are identified for their excellence as well, and they are Herb Cole Educational Foundation Teacher Fellows, and they receive a six thousand dollar award for their, for their accomplishments, and we have Shane McDonough from East High School, who is also supportive of special education and does great work as a work program coordinator, but he has done incredible work, and then, Brandon Rockstrow, so some of you might know, who is at Southwest High School in their music program, and then, we have Sarah Schiller from MacArthur Elementary, so we will invite them to honor them in the March board meetings, they are extraordinary examples of the great teachers we have here as well as the awesome students, and really excited to honor them and bring them forward. And that, there's much more success to share, but I'm gonna stop for now, so thank you so much for this opportunity.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Inter-City Student Council Report, turn that over to Luke.
All right, Chicago at Green Bay Southwest performed January thirty-first or February eighth, and we reached over two thousand people, so that was cool, and that musical also raised six, raised six, over sixteen hundred dollars for Golden House, which we partnered with them. There was a show choir competition at the pier, which South, Southwest, Preble, and East all participated in, East ended up getting fifth, Preble ended up getting third in for the first time in Southwest history, we won grand champions of the prep division, and my show choir director's right there, so that was a great day when we found that out. Preble got seventh at a competition in Naperville, Illinois for show choir as well, Carly Duffney hit a thousand points at Preble for basketball, which is a huge accomplishment, and Jadeon Simmons at Southwest won, achieved all-time leading scorer for our basketball team, Preble Dance Team won second runner-up at State, for dance and Southwest Dance won first in Palm, Southwest had Dude Be Nice Week, which is a week where we honor a staff member who isn't a teacher for doing great things and overall being a great influence on our school, and this year, our Dude Be Nice person was Jorge, which is one of our nighttime janitors, we honored him during our basketball game, and we held a dance afterwards. Our academic competition for social studies and the other academic teams is on April twenty-seventh, so you'll see a lot of schools preparing for that. East and Southwest both made it to Academic Decathlon State, which is eleventh, through the thirteenth of March, and Deco State, where we have contenders from East, Southwest, and Preble all going to that, which is the tenth through the twelfth of March. Spring sports are starting up, unfortunately, there's not a lot of practicing going on because snow, there's an FCC LA competition held at Southwest tonight, so I don't know how that could went yet, but I'm sure I'll find out. Jadeal had their open house on January twenty-eighth, and the weighted grades committee is continuing to meet, and we have our next meeting next Wednesday. And so, that's about it, that wraps it up.
Hey, thank you. Next is our legislative liaison report, and I'll turn that back to Laura.
Thanks, Breida. There's two items on our agenda, one is the governor's special session recap and a synopsis of, of the WASB Delegate Assembly. This feels a little bit almost like old news now, but I'm gonna do it anyway. The governors, a couple of weeks ago, the governor, Governor Evers called for a special session of the state assembly to propose, propose spending two hundred and fifty million from the current budget surplus on K twelve education. The proposal would have helped to fulfill the state's commitment to two-thirds funding in statewide twelve, K twelve and spending on school-based mental health and special education aid, and included a ten million doll, ten million dollars in sparsity aid. The spending also would have included one hundred and thirty million aimed at lowering property taxes through the equalization aid formula. In short, by more fully funding public schools, by more fully funding public education in the state, it would have lessened the need for school districts to go out for local funding referendums every two years. The assembly did meet, and the assembly gavelled in and out. The proposed legislation was sent to committee where it is expected to die. Let's see, the second one is kind of my impression and synopsis of the, of the Delegate Assembly that I attended at the convention a couple of weeks ago, and I just wanted to give some feedback as to the, the, the big, the big topic that people have been talking about is the proposed Native American mascot resolution that we, that we supported, it was initially proposed by Wassau, and we supported it here in Green Bay, and other districts across the state did as well. So, if you can just kind of imagine this room, it's a very large room full of hundreds of people, and they're all school board members from around the state. There's aisles in between large sections, and in those aisles, there's two microphones. When this item came up, people lined up right away to speak, and, and the lines are pretty long, so, and I was located by one of the microphones, and I fully expected to get up and to talk about the support that Green Bay has for the, had, for this, this resolution. And as, as, after about, I'd say about, I don't know, eight people had spoken, someone got up, called the question, it was immediately seconded, and we had to take a vote. So, we took the vote, and the resolution did not pass by a rather large margin, and there were a lot of really disappointed people in that room. It was very abrupt, and, you know, it really caused quite a stir frankly. So, afterwards, after we were finished, we, we were at a reception, and I spoke to some of the people on the governing committee there, and I said, look, this is, this is, this seems really wrong, that people, there was a lot of people who still wanted to speak, we didn't feel, I didn't feel like we were very far into the subject, there's a lot, a lot of things that still needed to be talked about, and those people all said, yeah, next year, we're gonna have to do better, we're gonna have to, you know, at, at the very least encourage people to have some patience and let people speak, speak to this controversial subject, and, let's see here, and then, also, they said they fully expect that this resolution will come again next year. The good news is that the three resolutions that were put forth by Green Bay were all adopted, and just for anyone who's wondering what those are, one was categorical aid for English learners, categorical aid for social and emotional learning, and categorical aid for transportation in high poverty districts, and all, those all made, made their way through, and that means that the, the WASB lobbyists will work on those with our state legislature. And that completes my report.
All right, thanks Laura. Next is district events, if there's anything anyone wants to highlight. And next is board member school visits update, people wanna talk about that. Eric?
I was able to attend the Silent Night game for the first time, was actually at the girls' game first, that was a great event, and then, had to leave early to go over and catch Chicago. I was also at Franklin Middle School for their production of Madagascar, which was really great, and Becky Rigo, who directs the play, actually directed me when I was in the middle school play at Franklin, so. Yeah, I was a little disappointed they didn't ask me to get up on stage as a stand-in, but, no, it was, it was great to be back there and to see that dedicated person who's been directing plays for, I won't say how long, but since I was in middle school, and continue to do it in the passion that she has, and went into the same classroom that she's been in for all of these years, and the same group of kids, and just a really special moment there, so, I'd probably been other places too, but those are the highlights.
Kay?
I was also at Silent Night, and went to the N E W and Jadeal Open House, that was impressive, and then, had the pleasure of watching you as Billy Porter in Chicago at Southwest.
Laura?
I attended the, some professional development at Preble with the, the staff there that I was, it was really interesting, the subject was cultural sensitivity, there was a couple presenters that were quite powerful, and the staff was incredibly brave, just sharing some, some things, and I, I'm very glad I went. Let's see, I, I went to Chicago, I enjoyed it enormously, and to Silent Night, I had a very nice meeting last week with Sally at Head Start, got a tour, I, I've been in that building a few times, but I got another tour, and we talked about some of the things that are going to be happening in the future. And then, this isn't a really school, a school visit, but our, a lot of our, our students were present, and I just want to mention that the emerging African-American leaders, I don't know if you call it conference that I went to last week, and Michelle was there and spoke, I'm sure there's video of her, of her dancing, and. And they gave her her own song because she's retiring, but it, it was a, I, I just attended the morning session and got to kind of experience that kind of amazing energy that those kids all bring, and those presenters as well, so I was, that was in Appleton, and there were other districts involved, but we had quite a good representation of our students at that, and it was, I'm very glad I went to that.
Brenda?
I was scheduled to be five places in the last two weeks, but I have had the worst health issues for two weeks, and I wasn't able to go anywhere, so, I'm disappointed in that, so, because there was a lot going on, so just to put that out there.
Andrew?
So, I also was at Silent Night, and then, I had my first opportunity to be in the new Baird, which was really, really amazing to see, I was there with my chess team that I was coaching, and they had about sixty-five kids or so from different, different grade levels, mostly Green Bay students, but it had, it did have some students from around the, around the region as well.
I, I think a bunch of us, and no one's mentioned it, we had our open houses in our, in our schools, and. Yeah, I know, I just looked it up, he reminded me when he mentioned going to Baird, so we had great, but number of us were there, great opportunity to, to see all the building that's gone on in our schools, and I also was at Franklin, at Madagascar, which is very entertaining, and also Lombardi, Willy, did Willy Wonka last weekend, the most impressive thing about Willy Wonka was that they had double casts, and so, they, they did the show four times, and they had one cast that did it twice, and another cast that did it twice, the same kids, but they had two different parts for both, both musicals, so that was quite, quite the work and quite the experience, yeah, a lot of work, but they did a great job. And then, also, I, the Jadeal and N E W open houses, and I spent a couple hours this afternoon with, or, yeah, this afternoon with Diane Lehman at Fort Howard, talking about, mostly about literacy. All right, let's see, I keep covering up my list. Next is teaching and learning, and that'll be facilitated by Eric Banden-Hubel.
All right, we will be bringing back the team with the, talking about the district wellness policy as a, as a follow-up from our conversation two weeks ago. Do we have, no, there's no, no, do we just make the motion, is that, I'm sorry, all right. Nothing to present?
Okay.
Yeah, well, then, I'll make, wait, do I, can I make the motion, sorry, I should, I have to make the motion. Yeah, there is a public comment, do I do that?
We have to make the motion first.
Make the motion first, and then?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, you're, you're in the same boat that I am, yeah, we'll figure this out together.
We can't discuss till we have a motion on the table, it's all very formal.
I will read the motion now. I make motion that the procedures for implementing District Wellness Policy Rule four fifty-eight as presented be approved.
Yes, I mean, second.
Yeah, we can either, we can either discuss or depending on what you want to do.
Well, why don't we call Megan up, since she's so eager, Megan, come on up. Thank you for being patient. If you could say your name and address, please, after you hit the microphone.
Is that on? Okay, awesome. My name is Megan Carlson, one thirty-nine South Monroe Street Avenue, Avenue, sorry. Ready? Okay. I'd like you guys to trust the teachers who are working for you each and every day. In just my building alone, we have over three hundred and fifty years of experience in the classroom, as well as several master's degrees and multiple certifications. We are trusted with the academic growth of our students every day. We utilize resources provided to us and make each lesson better than the next because we care for the academic well-being of our students. We spend hours analyzing data and finding ways to make each lesson more interesting, more engaging, and more meaningful, so all students can get the most out of each day. We are trusted with the social and emotional growth of, and well-being of our students. We provide lessons to guide our students and use the skills throughout the year to teach them life skills, which help them be the best person that they can be. From cooperative learning structures to team-building activities, these are important parts of the learning day, as they make students into well-rounded people. We are trusted with the safety of our students every single day. We help students to practice safety drills and feel prepared in the event of any type of an emergency, but overall, we are trusted that in that moment, we would make the best safety decision for our students. Trust that the teachers who pour their hearts and souls into this job will seek what is best for each student in every situation. We know our students, we know their family lives, their academic strengths, and what their favorite color is, we know what is best for them. Trust that the teachers know how important recess is for students, especially the most challenging. The break from academic learning is essential. Trust that students, students, that teachers rather, are not going to take away an entire thirty-minute recess as a first-choice punishment for their students. This is not an ideal situation for either student or teacher. Trust the administrators who put in countless hours and lead their teams of teachers. Trust that the administrators are selecting the best of the best candidates when hiring new teachers, long-term substitutes, and paraprofessionals. Trust that your administrators are following through with teachers who may need some guidance in their educational practices. Trust that your administrators are doing what is best for the students each and every day. We have students in our schools that don't always look forward to an outdoor recess. There are students who are working towards their own personal goals and want to earn simply board game time with their teachers in the classroom. There are students who need an extra five minutes of time to connect with their teacher, to build trust and to feel more comfortable, whether with a friend problem or an academic challenge. There are students who just want to sit with their teachers face-to-face to continue to build the relationships and connections needed for students to be willing to take academic risks. Trust that the employees that are working for the district are looking for what is best for each student every moment of every day. I'm asking that you trust the teams that you have in every school to have the ability to make the decisions that fit best for their students by allowing them to make decisions about recess. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Alright, is there any discussion? Andrew?
Yes, I was um, I was talking to Christine earlier and I know there's been some uh some additional committee, uh some additional committee discussion with the committee. And um what I'd like to do is move to postpone this to the March regular meeting cycle, at which time my understanding is that there'll be some additional opportunities to go through the committee feedback and see if any other um other things need to be fine-tuned. So that's my, my motion is to postpone for a month till next cycle, which Christina probably would have made if she was here.
Rhonda?
Second? Oh, can I? Okay, okay. So it's important because Christine is not here that we, I believe we should, and for the reasons that you just stated, we should definitely hold this until March.
Brenda?
It's my understanding, is is there? My understanding was that the committee, I'm looking at Vicky now, the committee processed what we said uh at the board table, had their meeting and this is the, this is the feedback you had, and then I noticed that there are bolded comments that are um what the committee came to consensus on. Okay, and so is there another meeting to look at this recess policy again? No, that's what I thought, so I'm confused about what kind of new information we would get in March. Andrew?
Well, is, but isn't there um, isn't some further discussion scheduled, Vicky, between you and Christina?
I'm not comfortable speaking for Christina, but I believe that her assumption was that if you were to take a look at the committee recommendations, it would require a number of amendments. And her preference would be to avoid that and bring back a a whole different updated document for the board to consider.
Because we couldn't, to to look at the committee feedback from February twelfth and combine that with the committee language and the consideration, we would have, there would be a there would be, yeah, there'd be a dozen amendments and some of them was a little bit unclear about the committee feedback. I think when I talked to her earlier today, the the hope was that there would be something where ra- yeah, rather than nit, you know, rather than nitpicking it here or trying to wordsmith it here, that all of the feedback could be consolidated into a final, a final product, that would perhaps be less less contentious.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
Being that Christina is the board member who is on the committee and has had most of the discussion and is not able to be here tonight, um and is there a reason this would be an urgent thing to pass or not pass or vote on, or is there any reason why, can you think of any reason why we wouldn't hold it till March?
The only reason that I wouldn't support that is that um I have a work conflict at our March board meeting, so I won't be here to vote on it. So I'd rather vote on it now because I'm here, but Christina's not here, so.
I just think because there seems to be some sort of uh changes, there are changes and I, and to not hear the discussion and the narrative why on record would, I think that's an important thing to do before we would vote on something. I'm assuming there are changes.
Oh, I'm sorry. The committee provided some recommendations in the fourth column on the document. Where we had lively discussion was the item under three B two, which I believe was um what the board was gonna discuss tonight.
Um and and to that point, I think it's important that we have this, we have her here, I think. Unless, I I just feel like that would be an odd thing to do. If there was some, this seems like a pretty substantial potential policy change. Discussion seems to be something that, this is not a nothing burger, right? This is something that has some, there's some energy around this, so I can't imagine why we would move forward if there's nothing urgent, and I hear what you're saying, but I I'm not sure why we would do that.
Was Christina at the meeting on the twelfth?
So the, and the committee had the discussion about all of the things that Christina brought to the table last time. So that conversation has already taken place. In the committee meeting.
That's not in public.
The results of that are being presented in public right now.
Sorry.
But I don't know what happened at that meeting. Right, but I mean, we're not able to discuss it, I guess I'm trying to find out why, what. Okay, but she's not here to do that. Right, but she's not here to do it in public and I'm not understanding why that's a big deal.
Brenda?
Can, just so I'm clear, this rule considerations document, what's in red, and I, I'm having trouble going back and forth, I should have printed one of these sheets. What's in red is, is what? Brand-new language that wasn't in the original policy that was brought to us last month? Yeah, so that's what, that's what she brought forward are those red areas. What's in black is what used to be there, more or less. Okay, so um and then it looks like there was conversation about various things and some things where there was consensus and other places where there was not, based on what I'm seeing with the committee feedback. Is that correct? Okay, I just wanna make sure I'm reading that chart correctly. Yeah.
I don't, I'm uncomfortable speaking for Christina, but uh the last time I spoke to her, there was discussion and we were hopeful to have it with the board tonight about the language in that final piece where there was debate. Leaving the language that the committee had initially intended and what we offered to the Board of Education, but also including language about a a strategy for professional learning for the new monitors and anyone else that might be supervising during recess. Acknowledging the fact that we aren't right now to the place where some board members really want us to be with saying you will not take away recess under any circumstance other than safety. But that we're going to work towards at least that philosophy of understanding that, yeah, we we believe recess is important and we'd like it in writing in some capacity, but perhaps not at this time. That was my last conversation with Christina, again, my preference would be that she be able to share that with the board, but I wanted to make sure you knew that that was out there.
Andrew?
This is Brenda's meeting, Brenda?
No.
What?
This is a, this is the regular board meeting. Yeah, you're the, you're the chair of the regular board meeting, he would be the chair of the work session. Am I wrong, right? If this is a work, yeah. Yes. Okay, so I, there's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of um feedback in here and, you know, questions about, you know, there's some committee feedback, the second red section, they like the second red section in one part and they don't like the first red section in the other, and if if there's a if if there's some further discussion taking in the committee feedback into, and um I I didn't even think there was gonna be much discussion about this, I thought this was just going to be postponed and there was gonna be an attempt to consolidate the the committee, the committee's feedback into a recommendation, so we didn't have to make dozens of amendments uh to try to to try to take this all, all in. I'm I'm hopeful that by next um I'm hopeful that by March, there might be a shot at a unanimous adoption here without, with needing fewer or no floor amendments, but, so I'm surprised we're still talking about this, because I thought this was a pretty easy call to to move it to next month.
So if I'm understanding this, I've been, so the committee, what we see in this document is the result of taking it back to committee as the board had asked and and Christina was part of that and robust discussion, and you can see where people lined up and and gave their feedback. It's my understanding then, Vicky, that you had a conversation with Ms. Shelton, who unfortunately had to leave, and it's almost like sending a bill to a conference committee where you have a couple of people look at it to see if there's places and spaces you can address what's in here, is that, is that how you're seeing it? So that you would come back, the whole committee would not convene, but you'll come back with something that addresses what you're seeing in the document as well as what what is missing from the document that you just explained about the professional development. And so that's, that's kind of where we're at, is that, does that make sense to to you? Okay, thanks, thanks for the clarification.
So yeah, it was my understanding that the committee wants to update it and then bring it back.
No.
That's my understanding. And that's what I was, that's what she shared with me.
I think there's a lot, I mean, so the committee has like like twenty, twenty things in here, some of them are, let's change this, let's not change this, some of them are, some of them are are mixed, right? So there's some hope that this could just be um consolidated around certain very valid things that just aren't here and we don't wanna wordsmith it tonight, like uh presumably, presumably to have a club meeting sometimes during recess, I I would be willing to guess that if it's a voluntary club meeting and that's the right time to to do it, that I bet there's probably almost unanimous agreement around it. I don't wanna just presume that and put, make this, you know, thirty pages long with amendment after after amendment, I think that can be um, I think that can be figured out by by next month. Not not replacing the committee feedback, but yes, I think the, Michelle, I think the conference committee analogy is a a good one here.
Call myself, so so I'm still confused. So you're gonna work with Christina? And and is that what I'm hearing? And you will um make the changes based on committee feedback that you think best represents the committee's um feedback on this and especially the areas where there's consensus. And so what we will get next month is a new compare document, a new um rule essentially, that has um I mean, we have it in our our attachments here. And so the the different sections that are being talked about will just look different on that. Is that? Is that, does that work? That's not, that was, wasn't the plan coming in, or? Okay.
The plan coming in was we shared the feedback with you, the board would have discussion and make a decision whether you wanted, what what next step you wanted.
Okay. Katie?
I think some of the confusion, at least for me, is that the, and I appreciate the fact that the recommendations are in bold print, um I guess they just need to be incorporated then into that column, because I agree with it, you know, I will support their recommendations, but if they could just be incorporated into that column.
I believe that was Ms. Shelton's request as well.
Yeah, toggle back and forth, yeah. Can you turn your microphone on, please? Thanks.
Who turned me off? Oh, sorry.
You asked her a question?
Alright, I'll allow that, sorry, no. That's fine, but I think it's important, um I don't think it's fair for Eric to do it, to change it to a time when you're not here.
Well, i- if. Sorry, I turned you off, and then I'll respond.
I'm wondering if it can be done at a time, we've got all these additional meetings, if we can address it at one of the, you know, vote on it at one of those meetings, or if that's gonna cloud issues, that's fine. Or if we can do it as part, are you here for the work session? Then I would propose a special meeting before the work session and then have you know, we can do that, so that you were here.
Okay, Rhonda?
I wanna clarify, Vicky. Sorry, I was misunderstanding, it was going to committee would be reworked, is, she's going to meet with you and re, okay, just wanted to. Got it. Eric?
Yeah, I I think if it's just a matter of cleaning this up, that that next time there's not a, in my opinion, a bunch of changes, if I can just see it in one document to understand um what we're voting on. You know, when I, when I think about issues like this that are, you know, that we have a lot of discussion on, oftentimes I hear a lot of different feedback, but I would say that it's pretty unanimous from any teacher that I talk to that the policy that's before us is um what they support and I, we do wanna trust our teachers, so if it's just a matter of delaying it to next month to see it in a concise way, then I'm okay with that, and then, you know, that should be what the discussion is on the second. And if I have to call in uh to vote, I don't know if that's a possibility, um I can do that as well, just be in Madison. So not be able to attend in person, but um.
I think we can do a special board meeting. At the work session. And then that'll give us the opportunity to vote, so you can vote then. If we tend, if we push it to the next board meeting, you can call in. Andrew?
Thank you, so I I almost um, I almost forgot and I I don't get to, I don't get to do this very um all that often, so um I'll just go ahead and say it publicly here, so um here we go. Alright, so last week when I, or last time, when I said that the committee was strictly advisory, okay? So I was wrong about that to an extent, so I'm just gonna get it out there and say it because the Wellness Committee in fact does have a um, a statute. because the Wellness Committee, in fact, does have a, um, a statutory authority. So while it still is, it still does recommendations, it is different and it is on a bit of a different level than a committee that is, um, strictly ad hoc. So it is, it is structured on the, the federal level. So I wanted to make sure I, um, pointed, pointed that out, so, there you go.
All right, and we have a motion on the table. Can you read it to us, Sandy? Because I don't remember what it said exactly.
Becker moved to postpone this item to the March board meeting cycle, seconded by Sitnikow.
And we can still schedule a. We can still schedule a special board meeting with that wording, Alyssa? We don't need to have a different amendment? Okay, I mean, a different motion. All right, is everyone ready to vote?
Vicky, I appreciate.
Thanks, Vicky. I know, yes, thank you. All right, um, Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy? Sit, no. Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Vandenhovel?
Aye.
Carried five-one. Um, we can schedule it at six, can't we? Yeah, I mean, I think just put it at six, be our first agenda item. And then people who want to come back can just have that be first instead of waiting. All right, um, next is organizational support, and that'll be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
All right, we do have, um, one item. It is a new business item since the last, um, work session. It's a statutory item. I move that pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section one eighteen point oh-seven, print four percent, print C P, the written drill evaluations submitted by the principals from all district schools as reviewed be accepted.
Second.
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vandenhovel?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
McCoy? Aye. Becker?
Aye.
Carried six-zero. You want to move the consent, Andrew?
I moved the consent, agenda is listed.
Second.
Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Vandenhovel?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Carried six-zero. Then we have, um, future agenda items, is there anything? Rhonda?
I've been asked to, I've been asked to ask if we could have some sort of a class size update and, um, discussion around just what's going on and what's happening for regards to relief and, um, maybe future plans and just in general. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right, and I, uh, entertain a motion to go back into closed session.
I move that the board reconvene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five, print one, print C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five, print one, print F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where par, print B applies, which, if discussed in public, would likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. In pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five, print one, print G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation which is, is or is likely to become involved to wit report of a policy violation, investigation of a board member, the board may return to open session to vote on items discussed in closed session.
Your second?
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Vandenhovel?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Abstain.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye. Carried five to one abstention. Convene across the hall.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine-two-zero-four-four-eight-two-zero-two-five or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.